Good morning and welcome to the January tenth, two thousand and eighteen Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. After the meeting today, there will be a reception for the new Chairman and Chair Pro Tem for the Board of County Commissioners. He'll be here on the third floor in the County Courthouse Building, five twenty-five North Main, and that reception will begin about ten thirty a.m. The Battle of the Badges Blood Drive ended recently, and I'd like to bring up a representative of the winning public safety team. The blood drive received one thousand two hundred blood donations and five hundred and eighty-four blood platelet donations. With that, I'd like to invite Colonel Powell to come and talk.
Thank you, Kate. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to come up here. Along with making a personal appearance here, I brought the trophy. Of course, all of you know this is an annual event. This was the twenty-third year for the annual Battle of the Badges Tournament, which is a competitive donation program between local law enforcement, local firefighters, and local EMS personnel, where we try to generate a lot of excitement and encourage our local community and folks that are blood donors, and even those that have never been blood donors, to donate blood during the Thanksgiving to Christmas season. That normally is the season throughout the year where the American Red Cross has the most difficult time in acquiring blood donors on a regular basis. This year, of course, with the three different representative groups of public safety, the law enforcement segment of the public safety group won the contest this year. This is the tenth time it's been won by law enforcement, and it's been won twelve times by firefighters, and one time by the emergency medical services. As Kate mentioned, there were a total of exactly twelve hundred units of blood donated here during that time period, and over five hundred donations for platelets. Those twelve hundred units of blood that were donated represent thirty-six hundred people that we touched. Every time someone donates a pint of blood, that has the capability of affecting three other people that are in need of such, that blood donation. We appreciate the support that you have offered us. I know several of you made an appearance at one or more of the meetings or the blood drive itself on the opening day, and of course, none of this could have happened, first off, without the support of the community and those people who donated blood, the regular donors and the new donors, but also the folks involved in the public safety environment itself. Being a representative of Sedgwick County per se, I would really like to applaud my fellow members of the public safety part of the county from Fire District Number One and Sedgwick County EMS, because they really helped carry the weight, they waved the flag, they made all the meetings, and even though we take a lot of pokes at each other, there's a lot of, you know, adjusting going on and things like that. It's good friendly competition, and I would like to say we represented Sedgwick County very well.
Well, congratulations, and thank you for that report, and we are also proud of the turnout and how much our community responded to what is a genuine need, but it was kind of highlighted and promoted through some good friendly competition. So, very successful, and we're pleased and congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
And one final remark. Sedgwick County offices will be closed on Monday, January fifteenth, in recognition of Martin Luther King Junior Day, so emergency services will be available by dialing nine one one or texting nine one one. With that, Chairman, I will let you kick off the meeting.
All right, Kate, thank you for that introduction. We want to welcome everyone who's in the meeting today and those that are watching by way of television, and with that, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, January tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Jocelyn Emerson, the Well Worship Center in Derby. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Would you bow with me in prayer? Father, we come this morning, and we are grateful for the gift of life, we're thankful, Lord, for our country, thankful for the freedoms, Lord, that we have, and we're thankful for all of the people, God, that make those freedoms possible. We pray this morning for our government, all the way from the highest offices to our local offices, and God, we pray, Father especially, that as a country you would help us to become more focused on what unites us instead of what divides us. And God, we pray for our leaders here in Wichita, and God, that you would help them to do the same. God, for the sake of our children, for the sake of now and years to come, God, let us be united to work together on the things that make us better. We pray that you'd give our leaders wisdom, God, that you'd help them to make decisions, God, based upon divine wisdom. We pray for your protection upon them, and Lord, we ask these things this morning in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Emerson, thank you for being here this morning. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Ranza.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Chairman Enrew.
Present.
And next item.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we've had one person sign up to speak to us, Mr. Dalton Glasscock, and he's representing Congressman Estes. Good morning.
Good morning. Morning, Commissioners, County Manager, and then Residents. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I just want to send greetings as you guys start this new year on behalf of Congressman Estes. The Congressman's currently in D.C., but I know we've had a strong partnership with you guys this past year. We look forward to that partnership in the upcoming year. Be sure to still be able to bring us together on constituent service issues in any way we can help constituents in your guys' area. Feel free to reach out to everybody else listening. Feel free to reach out to the Congressman's office if you have problems with federal issues, and again, we just wanted to send congratulations on this new year and best of luck.
Well, thank you for being here. We appreciate that greeting and send our regards back to the Congressman. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of November twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen.
Commissioners, you've had the opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes from November twenty-ninth, December sixth, and December thirteenth.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enrew.
Aye.
And next item.
Appointments. Item D, resolution reappointing Gary Bond to the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Civil Service Board.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, Item D is a resolution reappointing Gary Bond to the Sheriff's Civil Service Board. Mr. Bond had been appointed last year to fill out the term of Bobby Stout, and that term has now expired. Commissioner Michael O'Donnell is recommending that Mr. Bond be appointed to a full three-year term, which would expire January eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Bond is present to be sworn again, and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution of reappointing Gary Bond to the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Civil Service Board.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enrew.
Aye.
And Mr. Bond is here today, and Karen Bailey from the Clerk's office is here to swear you in.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Sheriff's Civil Service Board. So help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, for appointing me again or letting me serve on the Civil Service Board. I think as some of you know, my dad previously was a Wichita police officer for many years, and he also was on the Sedgwick County, so he served on, at different times, on both of the things, and so I grew up with him being a policeman and a Sedgwick County Sheriff's Department man. Somebody brought up the other day about Herman Hill Park, you know, and it's part of growing up that I remember Dad had to get up, and he was called out early that day. He was on a third shift usually, that was his favorite shift that he liked to work, was third shift, but because of what happened, he was called in, and so I have a lot of memories from when Dad served. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we have a comment from Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, sir.
Man, this four-year appointment really went quick.
Yes, it did. I was wondering about that.
Yeah, I know. I'm thrilled that you're able to do this. As you know, Bobby Stout is an icon in this community, so you taking his appointment is obviously a pretty awesome responsibility, but I appreciate your willingness to serve, and you and Kathy are so involved in the community and do a lot of great things for us, and so it's great to have citizens like you that are so involved and doing something that's so important, like serving the Sheriff's Department, and we're all very fortunate to have Sheriff Feaster as our chief law enforcement officer, but people like you are allowing him to do his job well. So, thank you, Gary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, resolution appointing Commissioner Enrew to the Law Enforcement Training Center Administrative Joint Board.
Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Powell, Deputy County Counselor. We are presenting this item. This is a new appointment, a new board, and so we're treating it a little differently. I've been working on the L A T C project for a while, and so I thought I would present this one to you and be available if any, if you have any questions, but Chairman Enrew has agreed to serve on this board. It's made up of five members, one appointee from this county commission, one appointee from the city council, another one from WSU, the sheriff is automatically appointed, and then the chief of police of the city of Wichita. So, the term would be until the B O C C decides that another person should be appointed, so I would recommend that you approve the resolution and allow Chairman Enrew to serve on this board. Just an additional bit of information, we'll be convening this board fairly shortly. By virtue of the interlocal agreement that we entered into with the city, we need to do that within the first quarter of having the certificate of occupancy, so we'll be convening that board, and Rusty Leeds and I will be assisting in helping that board perform its functions. Anyway, I'd recommend you approve the resolution, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Karen. I think we're all familiar with Law Enforcement Training Center, and it's just being open, its initial phase is here, so Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint you, Dave Enrew, to the Law Enforcement Training Center Administrative Joint Board, and I know you will do an incredible job.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enrew.
Aye.
Thank you, Karen. Next item, please.
Item F, accept the resignation of Matt Byrum from the Sedgwick County Third District Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, this is an acceptance of the resignation of Matt Byrum from the Third District Advisory Board. Mr. Byrum had indicated in writing that he's moving out of the district and does not believe he can serve any longer. We have no replacement for Mr. Byrum at this time, but I would urge that you accept the resignation at this time.
Thank you. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the resignation. Matt has done a great job serving on the board, however, he is moving out of my district, and so as a result, he will need to be replaced at some future date, but I move that we accept the resignation.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enrew.
Aye.
And next item, please.
New business, Part One. Item G, presentation of the two thousand and seventeen Chairman's Award.
Well, Commissioners, as you know, each year the Chairman has the privilege of selecting a person or an individual or group of individuals from the community who have made significant contribution to the betterment of our community and who deserve recognition, and although this might be, oh, not the best thing in the world to do, we think it's the best thing that we can do, and that is to name someone who the Chairman gets to choose to receive this award. I can't think of two people who would deserve the award more than Jerry and Triva Lichty, and they are here with us this morning, and I'd like for you to stand up here with me, if you would. Good morning. Good morning. Jerry and Triva have spent decades trying to make life better for those who live with mental illness in our community, as well as trying to minister to those family members, relatives, and caregivers who strive to help those families survive and cope with mental illness. And as an individual couple, as individuals and as couples, they work diligently to advocate for folks who have mental illness. Now, Jerry was one of the pioneering community leaders in the establishment of the Crisis Intervention Team, the Mental Health Court, the Mental Health Pods at the jail, and the Community Crisis Center, and all of you probably are aware of the fact that although these particular agencies are helpful to those in the community who have mental illness, and they are helpful to the community in general, they also have a direct impact on Sedgwick County administration and on our budget. So Jerry has helped initiate movements in our community that are beneficial over wide range. He's also served as President of the National Alliance for Mental Illness and Kansas State Board of Directors, and the National Alliance for Mental Illness for the Wichita Board of Directors. So he's very active, and it's a full-time job just about, isn't it, Jerry? Now, Triva serves on the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Committee, is past treasurer of the National Association of Mental Illness in Wichita, and she's coordinator of the NAMI Faith Initiative, National Association of Mental Illness, and that reaches out to local pastors and their churches with a program to enlighten them about the realities of mental illness. She coordinates the NAMI family-to-family classes and has taught them for more than fifteen years. Jerry and Triva are leaders in their church, the Loraine Avenue Mennonite Church, and they're persistent in their work to promote best practices to bring about good community solutions. So it's my honor to recognize Jerry and Triva today for their long-term outstanding work to our community, and express our genuine appreciation for direct benefit to Sedgwick County Government, along with the citizens that you serve. So, congratulations, and we want to offer you not only this, if I can get it picked up here, this little plaque as an expression of our appreciation, and we'd like to offer you an opportunity to say something, and my understanding is Triva, you've been elected, huh?
I guess so.
Commissioner Enrew, thank you for recognizing our efforts on behalf of persons, both adults and children, who live with biological brain disorders known as mental illnesses, and those who struggle with substance use disorders, addictions. The reality is that one in five persons in the United States will experience mental illness each year, impacting many families. We, along with members of NAMI Wichita, the local affiliate of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, look forward to continuing our work together with comm care, Wichita and Sedgwick County law enforcement, the schools, and our faith communities to increase awareness about mental illness with the goal of eliminating the stigma that still surrounds mental illness. And again, thank you, Commissioner Enrew, for your loyal support and advocacy for persons living with mental illness in Sedgwick County. Thank you.
Commissioners, I have been advised that we are supposed to take a motion to receive and file. I will make that motion.
Second.
Commissioners? Commissioner Dennis?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
And Chairman Enrew.
He's racing.
He's racing.
Say aye.
Aye.
On item H. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds of Sedgwick County, Kansas.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsey Perusso, your CFO. The resolution before you this morning authorizes the competitive sale of general obligation bonds to be held between now and roughly February twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Like those bonds you've been asked to approve in the past, this resolution would provide your authority for finance staff to work with Springstead, our municipal advisor, and Gilmore &amp; Bell, our bond counsel, to put together and distribute a preliminary official statement and notice of bond sale, and to make any other necessary actions to sell the bonds. This resolution and the circumstances are somewhat unique from past bond sales, though, in two primary ways. The first is that the sale we're talking about actually would be a second sale to fund the Ronald Reagan Building capital improvements. So, in two thousand and fifteen, the commission authorized a sale of bonds to reimburse the county for the purchase price of the building. Since then, nearly three point six million dollars in improvements have been done to the facility, and those have been funded with cash transfers from the general fund. By taking this action today, the board would authorize a bond sale where the proceeds of the sale are used to reimburse the county for those renovation costs. Further, the cash could then be used by the commission to fund other projects or services, while still attempting to preserve the board's intent to maintain a surplus, or at least not run a deficit, in the county general fund for the two thousand and eighteen fiscal year. Second, in terms of differences, it's different in the way we would actually do the bond sale itself. So, in the past, the commission would authorize this action today. Staff would go and work with our partners to put together the information, and then we would come back to you the day of a commission meeting after having held a bond sale in the morning. Commissioners would authorize the resolution and actually award the bond sale then. What we are instead proposing today would be that the commission chairman be authorized to actually sell the bonds on some date before that February twenty-first date, subject to a couple limitations, which I'll talk about, and then on the day of the commission meeting, the rest of the commission would essentially be asked to ratify that bond sale, because we would have already been authorized to do it. So, talking about those limitations, it would place three, a limit on the amount of principal of the bond, a three point seven million. You heard me talk about the three point six million before, that's for the actual cost of the renovations, but we also know there would be some issuance costs, and so that gives us that three point seven million rough figure. And then the second limitation would be that the true interest cost on those bonds not exceed two point seven five percent. Doing this approach would allow the county to achieve maximum benefit of the timing of the sale due to any volatility in the municipal bond market. So the financing action today could add up to three point seven million dollars to the county's balance of outstanding general obligation debt, increasing the total to about forty-five million dollars by the end of two thousand and eighteen. It would be structured as a series bond, meaning that a portion of the bond would mature each year over our twenty-year term. We estimate that annual debt service would be roughly three hundred thousand dollars per year in the first few years, and then would decrease over time in that twenty-year term. As you know, you all adopted a county debt policy last year that had five ratios in it, that when taken together essentially tell us what our debt capacity or debt limit is, and the policy outlines that we can issue debt as long as we stay below at least three of those measures. There is a fifth measure, you might recall, that measures our debt service per year as relative to a portion of the budget, and for that one measure, we must be below it in order to issue debt. When we take those benchmarks and apply it to what we're proposing to do today, along with what's in your two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-two adopted CIP, we actually remain below four of those benchmarks, including, and this is in your agenda item, if you need the specific details, we are below four of those. The fifth one that we exceed actually is the measure that takes all of the outstanding debt of all of the taxing entities in Sedgwick County, and puts that on a per capita or per member of the population basis. So our benchmark for that, our preferred standard, is three thousand dollars. We currently are above that regardless of today's action at about thirty-eight hundred dollars. But to put that in context, again, this takes into account all school districts, cities, townships, everything. Of that thirty-eight hundred rough figure, the county's portion of that, even with this debt, is one hundred eighty-seven dollars per capita, so that means roughly thirty-six hundred dollars is from all of the other entities within Sedgwick County. So, I think it's important to note, then, that it's not necessarily our debt that is the driver for that measure, and so we are well within the tolerances that have been established for us and in the research we've done about what's acceptable in the municipal bond market. So, with all of that information, I'm happy to try and answer any questions for you. I'm also pleased to say that Joe Norton from Gilmore &amp; Bell, our bond counsel, is here, and I'm sure would be happy to try and attempt to answer any of your questions. If you don't have any questions, I recommend your authorization of the resolution, and I'm happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Lindsey, and this not only simplifies and streamlines the process somewhat, but it also allows us to position ourselves for better rates. Is that, I mean, does the timing of this allow us to maybe take advantage of that?
Right. Right. The fact that the Chairman can approve it would allow us to do work with our municipal advisor primarily to let us know kind of when ideal conditions are in place, so we can capture the interest rates that day instead of whatever may be on the market the day of the bond sale that we would otherwise schedule, the day of the meeting.
Good, thank you. Commissioners, are there other questions, Lindsey? I think we've been briefed on this, and so I think it appears we're ready to move forward. Commissioners, what's the will of the board? Commissioner Ranza?
Yep. Maybe I missed this, but tell me exactly what we're going to spend this money on.
We have not dedicated anything for that. What I would propose to you all to consider would be that on the day you ratify the bond sale, that we would come back with a motion for how you could potentially earmark those funds and identify how you want those to be spent.
I guess I have a problem with borrowing money just because we can. Have we given some options? I mean, we've already paid for the Reagan Building. We don't need to borrow money unnecessarily. When I look at some of the reasons that have been given that we may spend it on, I don't see them as justifications to borrow money. For example, one of them is the administration building. We can borrow money for the administration building anytime. But the first one that's listed and the one I hear most often is the incentives for spirit for seven million dollars, because maybe if we do it sooner, we can save some interest costs, but the problem is, I mean, we already have a plan, I mean, if you really want to save taxpayer dollars and you're concerned about interest costs, then we shouldn't have made that commitment to begin with, but we have a plan to borrow money for the spirit program for ten years. And so, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lindsey, I'm trying to get, if we do- costs, then we shouldn't have made that commitment to begin with. But we have a plan to borrow money for the spirit program for 10 years. And so, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lindsey, I'm trying to get, if we do that, it was going to cost us $768,000 in interest for 10 years.
Yes, sir.
But if we only bond part of it, like 4 million, then that particular bonding would cost us $442,000. But by bonding this here for the spirit building and it being a 20-year term, it actually increases the debt service, and just on that 3 million, the debt service would be about $700,000. So, if we do these separately, the total interest cost is over $1.1 million. So, it actually increases. We're better off, if you're going to bond the spirit deal, you do it for a 10, all of it for a 10-year deal because you save hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, I just have a problem with that. So, I'm going to oppose this. I don't think we actually need to borrow this money. The things that we need to borrow money for in the future, we can do anyway. And when it comes to the spirit deal, that, you know, doing a 10-year term, like I say, saves hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, I'm just continue to be just a little confused as to why we're doing this. I don't think it really makes good financial sense for us in the long run. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions and maybe then some comments, but the, what we're going to use this money for is a future decision. When we do the bonds, I guess it's in February, I have the date or somewhere, but when the bonds are going to be, actually I have it here. Anyway, what's the date? Let me ask you that question that way.
We have the tentative timeline that, or tentative timeline we have now is February 21st, which is the last commission meeting in January, or in February for the commission.
Thank you for that clarification. I apologize for not having that date in front of me, but we have a retreat before that where I would anticipate some discussion about our strategy. I guess I do appreciate the updated process for us to capture some savings. If we are going to do bonds, I think to arbitrarily pick a date in the future, at a time in the future, whatever the interest rates happen to be at the moment, is not as good as allowing us some flexibility as to when those bonds are captured, so to speak. Is that, was that a good way to say that?
I agree with that, yes.
Okay. So, I think that's a step in the right direction. I believe that's good. In terms of what we're going to use this money for, the only way I would like to support this, and I think this is a future discussion, so I'm certainly willing to hear from the public and continue to think about this, but to me, the point of this is, is I think that the admin building, in my opinion, is, seems to be a real issue. I think we are going to be moving towards an admin building at some point, and arguably, I think we'll be using bonds for that building. I don't see there's any way for us to do the admin building probably with cash. So, that will be a 20-year bond, and to use the, to use this $3.6 million, it does seem to solve $600,000 for the 235 project, probably. That's a future discussion as well, but probably that would solve that. But to put 3 million of this towards the spirit incentive, in my opinion, is not something I would support, only because, I support spirit with passion, but that's going to be a 10-year bond, we anticipate, probably. Could be something other than 10, but we're anticipating a 10-year bond on that. And to use 20-year debt to pay for something that has a less interest charge on it because it's a 10-year bond, in my opinion, I don't want to make that connection. But I do think there's wisdom in taking the $3 million left over from this and putting it towards admin building. I know the admin building would cost more than 3 million, pretty sure, and interest rates are better now. So, there's going to be some savings if we were to take advantage of this today. Some of the other things is, it does, as you've already said, Lindsey, it stabilizes our budget a little bit, and we can continue to settle in on MABCD fees that cover, I guess, the cost of the Reagan Building. That will be essentially a connection between fees and payments to that building that they're living in. Is that fair to say that?
Right. They're already paying some of their fees toward that bond service.
They're already paying that, so it means a connection there that does make sense. And so, there's reasons why I think I can support this today, but I guess I would just caution the discussion to say, to me, using the $3 million towards the admin building when it's 20-year bonds versus 20-year bonds, that makes sense. Interest rates today versus interest rates in the future, that makes sense. And so, I think two reasons to move forward. Number one is I think we're, this is a better policy. If we're going to borrow money, this policy of, you know, looking at a window of time to make the, to capture those bonds when interest rates happen to be low during that period of time, that makes sense. And second of all, bonds today towards something we're going to spend versus bonds in the future, which is arguably going to be more than what we'll do today, to me, that just says we'll save some money comparing 20-year bonds to 20-year bonds, and that I would very much support. So, that makes sense to me as well. But if this money ends up in our general fund and we end up using the money for other purposes, then I would be disappointed in those decisions. So, I think that to use this money ought to be reserved for CIP-type things, and I think that to reduce the amount of obligation on the admin building, if that's, if that makes sense, that, to me, is a good policy. So, I would be willing to support this today on that, on that idea. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, one thing you said before, once we sell these bonds, we're going to make another vote in the future, and we're going to be able to, say, ratify this, but at the same time, we're going to be able to earmark how that we can spend this money, correct?
Absolutely.
So, if we decide that we don't want to spend it on something that we could use 10-year bonds on, which I agree with, we can do that. We can make smart decisions in the future and earmark this specifically for things that make sense to use bonding for, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, I do support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ranza?
So, my question is, why can't we do that today?
You could. We don't have the bond proceeds at this point earmarked, and so we do actually have a provision in the resolution that you're proving today that if we have any proposals in excess of that amount, that we could reject the proposals. And so, to me, it would make better sense to make sure we know what those proceeds are and then have an opportunity for you all to talk about how specifically you'd like to earmark those, and then we can bring a specific agenda item to you on that. But you could certainly do that today, just conditioned on that.
Here's the problem. From all the conversations I've had with staff and commissioners, it seems like to me, the favorite, maybe I'm wrong, the favorite option up to this point has been to use it for spirit, which is why I'm, really why I would oppose this today. If we made the specific intent today that that, that we would use it for the admin building and only the admin building, I guess we're taking a bit of a risk because there was some discussion that we may or may not even get an admin building last time. But that's the only way I would contemplate, and it still makes me nervous that we're buying it before we know. But nevertheless, I can't, I can't support it because my impression I've been given right now is that it's going to be for the spirit deal, which I don't think makes sense. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see anyone else asking to speak, but I would just make the comment, I guess I look at this just a little differently. We have a long-term 50-year asset in the Reagan Building, and it costs a certain amount of money to do that project, and it is worthy of bonding as a long-term capital project. So, I'm thinking we're bonding that, the remainder of the cost of that building and paying us back for cash that we advanced. That money then sits in our reserve account in the county commission finances, and at the appropriate time, we'll make a decision on how to manage that money. We're not required today to make a decision that's six months ahead of time or a year ahead of time on what we're going to do with that money. We know that we have taken the money we spent on the Reagan, and we have replaced that into our, into our balances, our cash reserve balances for the county, and we can make that decision what we want to do later. This is not a decision about what we're going to do with it. We're paying ourselves back for money we already spent, which is legitimate to bond a long-term capital investment. We'll get it back, then we'll manage that money to the best advantage for Cedric County taxpayers. So, I'm not all wound up today about, well, where are we going to use it? It's going to go back in our reserves, and we're going to manage it the way we ought to manage it going forward. So, those are my perspective on this issue. Chairman, or Commissioner Howe?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, I think we've got some bonding options coming up. Obviously, the spirit building is one, and the admin building's another. Those are two fairly significant projects we've got to find financing for, and I know this is a future discussion, but just to put that in perspective, if the spirit bonds are 10-year bonds, our total finance charge there, I have the numbers in front of me here, it'll cost, it will save, I should say, if we borrow 7 million versus 4 million, there's a $326,000 difference in interest costs. But if you add in the 3 million for the Reagan Building, as a matter of discussion, over 20 years, it'll actually cost us $370,000 more for the same dollars, if I did that math correctly. And so, to me, I know that we, I agree with the chairman. We can have this, we can certainly make decisions on what's best for the county at any given time, and certainly those options will stay on the table. But I guess as a preliminary discussion, I do hope that if we have two bonding projects to finance, it would be better for the county to, I guess, consider this money as a way to, you know, connecting 20-year bonds to 20-year bonds is my, is the principle I'm after here. It would actually save 300, it would save, I think, $370,000 to put this money towards the admin building versus the spirit building. So, to me, that's the reason why I think that that's got value, and I hope we would consider that as a smart decision going forward. Nevertheless, I think there's opportunities for us today, and I'll support the motion, but I'll support the agenda item, but I do hope that we can have a good discussion about these two projects against each other and find out what really saves the taxpayers the most money going forward. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I think we will have those robust discussions. Commissioner Ranza?
Yeah, with respect to Reagan Building, I want to be clear. We did, correct me if I'm wrong, we did bond the purchase price of the Reagan Building.
Yes.
We did not bond the renovation cost, which I felt like at the time was a good balance between, you know, what to bond, what not to bond. I think it's important to remember the original estimated cost, I think with interest was scheduled to be around 20 million, but we were able to reduce that down to 10 million for the taxpayers. And like I say, we did bond about $5 million, which was the purchase price, but we paid cash for the renovation cost. So, if that's the rationale for bonding today, I wouldn't be supportive for that either. But moving forward, you know, if we do this anyway, you know, I'll have my other issues with respect to what we ultimately decide to do with it. So, I just wanted to clarify for the record my position on the Reagan Building and what actually happened. Thank you.
Commissioners, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we need a motion, and I will move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
No.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Anru?
Aye. Thank you, Lindsey. Next item.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve Consent Agenda Items India Through Quebec with the exception of Mike. I'd like to pull that off and give Lindsey a chance to explain it because we made some modifications to that one.
All right. Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Move to approve India Through Quebec with the exception of Mike.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Anru?
Aye. And Lindsey, would you discuss item M for us?
I would be delighted to. Thank you. Commissioners, Lindsey Perusso, your CFO, thank you for pulling item M off of consent. The original agenda item that you received asked for a transfer that has since been modified. As you know, these year-end transfers are typically pretty routine items. State budget law allows us to do interfund transfers of cash from operating funds to an equipment reserve fund. In this case, we have three transfers that we are requesting, one from the Fleet Management Fund and two from the General Fund, all of which would be supported with their 2017 operating budgets. For Fleet, we would ask that you support, instead of the original backup, we would ask that you would support a transfer of $644,910 to fund three ambulances, which were, met the new Fleet Management utilization standards in 2017. Then there would be a fourth ambulance that would be funded out of Fleet's 2018 operating budget. And then we would ask you to support a $122,550 transfer from the General Fund to support a project worth $24,000 for the District Attorney's Office to equip some newly vacated space here in the courthouse, along with $98,550 for emergency communications to finish the installation of six ice shields on radio towers around the county. So, with that, you have a resolution before you that's been modified, and I would ask that you please approve that amended resolution.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Manager, were you wanting to say something?
I agree with everything she said, but I need to amend my motion because I added Papa in Quebec in there, and we'd need to save that for later. So...
Oh, yes, you did.
My remark was India Through Oscar with the exception of Mike, if we can make that change.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend my initial motion to, for India Through Oscar with the exception of Mike.
Yeah, we were going to, we were going to move right along there, weren't we? Okay. Madam Clerk, are we square with the motion?
We're square with the motion.
Second.
But we probably need to take another vote.
Okay. We'll be happy to do that. We're, so Lindsey, hang on. We're going to get this corrected. Madam Clerk, call a vote on that.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Anru?
Aye. And so, now we are ready to discuss or have a motion on item M. I think we understand what you presented, and I think that we're in agreement with that, but Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve item M, Mike.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion now? All right. And Madam Clerk, call a vote on that.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Anru?
Aye.
Thank you.
Lindsey, thank you. And now, we are ready for item P.
New Business Part II, Item P, selection of one member of the Board of County Commissioners to serve as chairman through January 9th, 2019.
Commissioners, this is our annual election for chairman and chairman pro tem. Before we enter into this, as, this is right at the end of my opportunity to chair the meeting, I just want to say that I appreciate the privilege that my colleagues have given me to serve as chair this last year. I believe that we've had a productive year, and we have, I think, strengthened our partnerships and relationships in the community. I think we've made financial decisions that give us financial strength and allow us flexibility for facing financial challenges that are on the horizon going forward. And in general, I think we've just done good business, and I'm pleased with the work of the commission, and thank you for the opportunity to serve as chair. And with those comments, we're ready now to select a new chairman, and I believe the first person asked to speak was Commissioner Ranza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, we'd like to say thank you for your service and leadership in this past year as a chairman. I surely appreciate it. While we haven't always agreed on issue, I think we get along and respect each other, and I appreciate our relationship. I'd also like to nominate Commissioner Dennis to be the next chairman of this commission.
Thank you. Now, I believe the way that we have done this in previous times, which is most, which works pretty good, is it's, anybody can nominate anyone. It doesn't require a second, and if we get more than one nominee, the clerk calls a roll, and we just say the name of the person that we support. That way, kind of a nice way so that no one has to vote against anyone. We can only, we only vote for someone. So, if that's agreeable to the commission, that's what we'll do this time. So, we have a nomination of Commissioner Dennis and Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank you for your service to the county this last year. It's been a stellar year. I love that term. It's been a tremendous year. I think one of the best years of my being a commissioner has been in 2017. I appreciate your leadership this last year, and I want to say I love serving with all of my colleagues. I think you all have value and bring... I think you all have value and bring unique perspective to the board. I think we do a great job overall, having discussion and make good decisions, and I appreciate being a part of this team. And I just want to say, I have confidence in all of you. But having said that, I wanted to highlight Commissioner Dennis. I agree with the motion, and I'm glad to support that motion. I know it don't require a second, but I would second if I had the chance. But nevertheless, I do want to say that Commissioner Dennis has really proven himself to me this last year. I did not know him before he was an elected official here on the commission, but he's really demonstrated great leadership. He was a great leader in the state and in the community before he was a commissioner, and he's demonstrated that here this last year especially in the county. And so he's a proven leader. I think he brings excellent perspective, and I just really appreciate him. He's always thoughtful, and he's always respectful in how he conducts his business. And I know he would do a tremendous job as chairman in 2018. So with that, I would have great confidence and be glad to support the motion this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I second your comments. But we're not taking seconds right now. I don't see anyone else asking to speak, and we have just one candidate. So Commissioners, with your approval, we'll ask the clerk to call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Commissioner Dennis.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Commissioner Dennis.
Commissioner Howell?
Commissioner Dennis.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Commissioner Dennis.
Chairman Enruh?
Commissioner Dennis. And congratulations. I still have to finish this meeting, though. Okay, all right. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I also want to include my comments to thank Chairman Enruh for his service to Sedgwick County for the past year. It's been my honor to get to know him much better and watch him lead our county, and I sincerely appreciate his leadership.
Thank you.
I also want to thank the other Commissioners on the bench with me today. It's an honor to serve each and every one of them. I know that they each have unique personalities that I've grown to really enjoy, actually.
He's looking at me when he says that.
They are also doing what they truly believe is right for Sedgwick County, and I do appreciate that. It's an honor to have been selected to be the new chairman for Sedgwick County for 2018. My goal, as it's been ever since I've started public services, is to serve our citizens, whether it's our citizens in Sedgwick County, in the state of Kansas, or our nation, and I will continue to do that. But most of all, I want to thank my family, because they're the ones that allow me to do this. I've retired several times unsuccessfully, and it's only because my family has given me the support and granted me the opportunity to continue to serve our citizens. So again, I want to thank everyone. It's an honor, and I appreciate it very much.
Madam Clerk, we're ready for next item.
Item Q, selection of one member of the Board of County Commissioners to serve as Chair pro temp through January 9, 2019.
All right, Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've already stated some of my opinions of you this morning, and again, I think that you have been a tremendous leader this last year. And I would say that having a team of Commissioner Dennis being the chairman and you being pro temp would be a good representation for Sedgwick County for 2018. I'm pretty sure you can handle it. You've got plenty of wisdom, I know that. And I think you're always classy, and I think that's a great word to describe a Commissioner Enruh. So with that, I would be honored to nominate you, Commissioner Enruh, as chairman pro temp this year.
Thank you. Are there other nominations? Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll say, I appreciate, as I said earlier, Commissioner Enruh's service this year. He's been the chairman, I don't know, how many times? Four, five times in pro temp? How many times?
I don't know.
Quite a few. Actually, on this particular position, I think we may disagree just a little bit. I would have preferred someone like myself or Commissioner Howell to be the pro temp. So I'm actually going to abstain from this vote. I've talked to the chairman for a variety of reasons, which I won't get into today. But I will say, the main takeaway from this meeting, I think, is that Commissioner Dennis will be the chairman, and that's a huge, huge win, not only for this commission but for this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And any other comments or nominations? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Commissioner Enruh.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Abstain.
Commissioner Howell?
Commissioner Enruh.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
An emphatic Commissioner Enruh.
Chairman Enruh?
Commissioner Enruh. So, thank you all. Thank you. We will do our best going forward to continue to do a good job for Sedgwick County, and I know new chairman Dennis is also committed to frank, open discussion. So no one will wonder where we stand as we have discussions. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, according to Kate, is this the time to do the award? It's not on our new business, but I have the great opportunity today to present the chairman's plaque, which has a nice gavel there at the top, to Commissioner Enruh for 2017, for your leadership. This, I believe, is number six, right?
Number five.
It is just number five? Okay. Well, this is the fifth one. One doesn't become chairman five times without commanding a lot of respect and admiration from your colleagues. And I don't think there is anyone in this community that can deny that you have been a tremendous leader, a tremendous asset, and you truly are a dignified and classy individual, to steal the word from Commissioner Howell. This has been a great year of leadership from you. It's been a great year for our community. I think we've had a lot of growth, both in the private sector with great announcements like Spirit Aero Systems. There's been a lot of healing in the community, I feel, and I think you would concur, that we did a very good job of building stronger relationships with the city of Wichita. Definitely a lot of healing with relationships across the street, which is good for us. It's good for our community, and it wouldn't have happened without Commissioner Enruh taking the lead. Last year, that was the easiest vote that I made all year long, and that was supporting Commissioner Enruh on my first day. He and Karen are great friends of mine and great friends to countless others in our community, and you are truly the example of what a public servant should be. And our community is a privilege that you have given the last 15 years to us, and I think it is wonderful and outstanding that you were able to be chairman this year and that you'll be able to be chairman next year in your election year and whatever you decide to do. But Commissioner Enruh, we all on the board owe you a debt of gratitude, and I think the community does as well. So congratulations on your award this year.
Well, very kind words, and Commissioner O'Donnell neglected to say that he's been pro temp this year and whispering in my ear all year long.
That is true. That is true.
Commissioners, we've come to the, near the end of the agenda. I guess we have legislative issues, but I don't think there's anything to discuss today. And we are ready for other. If no one wants to speak under other, we don't have a need for executive session. So Commissioners, we are at the end of the meeting, and we have a reception to attend. So we will, at this time, adjourn the county commission.